All right, item number ten, three thirty-four, dash four, to Fox River Avenue. A site plan noted to approve plan for construction of two and a half story business building. Section block lot is forty-eight, twenty-three hundred two, dash four, dash twenty-one, point one hundred. Senior interrogation, Zone Haven, Christmas and Emerald, forty-six, Jim Dawson, first applicant in order. Hi folks.
Hi.
Jim Dawson, the project committee's here. How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good job on one of the pieces, right? The work that was your project for, that was very piazzico, you were the contractor, right?
Not till the end.
Okay.
It's a sore subject.
Okay, sorry.
But it does look good, thanks.
Yes, it does, yes. All right, um, and the building, I think it looks beautiful.
And that's what we're gonna talk about.
Well, you're here to discuss, um, the amendment to some of the developments that were approved in the version of the project. Tell us what you, uh, for your closing.
We, um, the change was made to landscaping. Also, the recital. The number of parking spaces has remained the same. Just the picnic desk spot has been changed to a more convenient location. The park, the carpet structure has been changed to a more convenient location for the garbage molder to come in and out of the site. And the fence, as they said, uh, around the perimeter. And I have pictures with me to show you what the site looks like today and what the substitute lighting looks like. I'd like to pass those pictures around this table. The first one is showing, um, the landscaping that was added between, um, Mr. Nelson's property and the convenience gas station on the corner. Other landscaping that was existing, landscaping and landscaping enhancements and then photograph with the building itself. So, the, the entrances.
I think we have a couple of conversations here.
Restoring entry.
Can those conversations be brought out of the room?
Yeah.
Thank you. Those, the folks in the back also.
Ladies. Ladies and gentlemen.
Sorry, Paul. The entrances, as previously, um, proposed, have been maintained. There are no changes. The site is going up exactly as, as the original proposal. What we're talking about here is a few minor changes to the green areas, some landscaping changes to facilitate, help remove and so forth, and just make the site easier for children to manage in the future. So, Jim may want to speak to those changes and, uh, and, uh...
They're on the plan.
They're on the plan. I have the original plan here and the plan as it looks today. There's a great deal of difference. Some of the landscaping has been changed. But I think there was a, a, a little change for Mr. Nelson to enclose this complex with the fence. And the fence type was really was very attractive to the project and kind of the clients this project has by itself. Isolates a little bit. Jim has commented to families, there are children living in that facility now, which defends somewhat is a little bit of protection. Any questions about, I mean, his mix of tenants is a little bit different from what he originally anticipated. He's getting, uh, young families in there with children.
So, is that the original plan?
This is the original plan, right?
This is the new one. Does the installation of the fence along take away from site distance?
I looked at that a couple of times. Jim and I discussed that. We do have stop signs in front of the fence, okay? The angle of view from the scene, a car, I have a very short car basically, and I'm able to see a portion of people on both sides of the entrance. And we only have one exit, so our limits of exposure are somewhat confined to that one exit path. And there is a stop sign, and Jim is giving a stop bar on the pavement there also.
I'm just gonna say it, no offense, I don't like the fence across from the building. I mean, we, we went over this landscape plan when this project first started. I think they left and came back at least once or twice on the landscape plan. The board was adamant that we want the front of the property cleaned up. We want street trees. We talked about it, and this fence was not on the plan. I've gone down the street, project looks great behind the fence, but in front of the fence, there's barely any grass, and there's just a curve, and it does not do anything for the streetscape. And originally, when this plan came in, the board was concerned at the size of the project, but we were softening it with all these trees and with this landscape to make it feel more like a neighborhood than a commercial board. And, I mean, the fence is fine on the side, fence is good in the back, but across the front, you don't see a shrub. You know, it's, it's fence. I'm just not a fan. I don't know how other board members feel about it, but, I mean, I remember Mary Jo and I, we went back and forth on this numerous times.
I can have said that better decision.
Is there objection to the changes, fence, is that...
Well, I'm trying to look at the, I mean, no one's really gone through the changes. I see a plan, I see a plan. I mean, obviously, naturally going to look into the property, I see a fence right down the center, so I don't like the fence. With regard to the shrubbery, we had talked about street trees, and I'm guessing they're not on the new plan. I mean, there's a table here that, I didn't have the time to go through individual plan, but I think staff did, and it looks like, basically, everything that was of the large scale that caused us off in the building, this off the streetscape, got trimmed down to bushes. I mean, I don't really care where the dumpster is, I don't really care where the ZVA parking lot, uh, specific spaces are, as long as they meet the guidelines and they work with the project. I mean, that swap doesn't matter, but, I mean, we, I think as a board, we're pretty adamant that we want a nice landscaping on a residential project, and, I mean, I don't know.
Can you just go through some of the other changes? Did you actually explain what those changes were? Or, I mean, they haven't...
As far as the statue, or...
We haven't seen the plan, so you gotta go through the plan and show us.
Yeah, they have notes, but they haven't seen, and I think there might gonna be some changes on that one.
The entrance remains in the same location, okay? The entrance is an in only, closer to the corner, okay? The, um, the exit entry, um, on the, uh, that would be the west side of the site has remained the same, okay? We have a substantial tree here, which in the original concept was not shown, but there's a substantial tree here that is remaining. There's a photograph of that tree spinning past around, um, that corner, that's it right there. Okay, we'd like to keep that tree, and that was not shown in the original plan, and that's gonna remain. We're gonna plant, there is a plum tree planted right here in this opposite corner of the site, and then it has four evergreen trees that are depicted in one photograph there looking at the Sunoco Station.
Or a variety.
Okay, then we have, um...
Do these get taller? Do these get taller?
Yeah, they're gonna get a lot taller. Yeah, that's the intention.
Okay, um, we have, um, a landscaping and the reduction of trees is noted, that a number of trees are, they're eliminated from the plan. As you can see, the larger symbol that was like a spider, basically, is a symbol for trees, and that has been eliminated from the program, okay?
The reasoning being, a lot of it, that's where the snow has to be pushed in there, so we really had to, that's why we kept the arbor siding much closer to the fence. The rose and sharan now shown, much closer to the fence. We have to push the snow, and we have no other place to put it, so projecting landscaping out closer to the, uh, blacktop just doesn't work, so that's why we pushed everything back and got it tight to the fence on both ends as properly.
Is that something right here or over here?
Well, on, on, on all sides. I mean, we're pushing snow this way, we're pushing snow here, we're pushing snow all back in here. We have no, no place else to go. We can't push across the street, so when we come in, all of the snow has to be dealt with. So, the, uh, in the original idea, there was maybe even something in the middle here, which didn't work at all, and, uh, the intention is to push the snow both ways. In terms of the streetscape landscaping, I do have five rose and sharan here that are behind the fence now. They're only about three feet high, or two to three feet high now. I expect they're gonna, in a few years, are gonna be eight, ten feet high, and this will be a beautiful hedge of rose and sharan in three different colors. We have grasses on either end. We have more rose and sharan here and rose and sharan along the fence. They're all gonna grow and be, I didn't think trees were appropriate. I, the ones across the street, I thought were just really awful. They, they're up, grown up in the, in the electric lines, they're not pruned, they're, they're just terrible. And, uh, I didn't want that much blockage, honestly, of my building and of the visual both ways. I didn't think it was appropriate. And, you know, I worked and developed what I have here now over a lot of the last year of working here. This was just a conceptual, uh, idea. I never had the intention of sticking to it personally. I worked it to, like everything else, I worked it to make it feel and work what I felt was really appropriate.
Well, this is the plan.
I understand I have a plan, I have to work with it.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to get at.
I do understand that, that's why we're here, but I, I, in the process, we did develop that, that the fence was an afterthought in the front, after having been there and observed the behavior in the neighborhood and, uh, everything else, it just seemed a lot better for my tenants and for everyone, to keep the public out. And, uh, in terms of the visual, I think with all of this growing up, I think there's gonna be, uh, certainly plenty of, of blockage. Taking it down, you know, trees, are they gonna...
Is this pathway, we're showing your original, I wasn't here, it looks like it's been...
It's been eliminated, yes. This area here is where the bus, the kids, kids gather in the mornings. They had been over at the Sunoco. We've now created a little spot in here where the, the kids in the morning can stop, it'd be the, where the bus stop where they're picked up in the mornings. So, we've gravelled this area to keep the water out, and, uh, it's, and just, just a little spot wall inside the sidewalk. Now, in, on the street side, we have, we are maintaining the, the grass on both, on both sides of the sidewalk out on the front, uh, as, as we're supposed to.
So, as far as the asset goes, and the changing of the layout of the, of the approved plan, um, what, I know you, what's the board, Theo, what are you powering? What do you wanna do with the, what's the original one, or what do we...
I mean, I understand his point with the snow on the sides. I'm not as opposed to the sides. I understand his point in regard to the handicap. My biggest beef is the streetscape. I mean, he, as he just described, he has beautiful landscaping. You cannot see it from the street. I mean, it's just, there's a big gray fence that runs the whole length of the property, you can't see it. It's not what visually we were looking for on the street. Everything's behind the fence. And unfortunately, the project goes out to the street, you just can't write the street off. I mean, this, this project was designed on the street, knowing the street, knowing the surrounding properties, and knowing the plan, the purpose of the plan, and the purpose of the board, looking at this application, not once, but I think two or three months. I mean, to hear that, well, I just wasn't gonna follow the plan, is an insult to the board. I mean, why do we waste our time looking at it?
Can we also just clarify the zoning issues that have now come up in terms of the change of use, because I think those are gonna dictate where you go with the landscaping?
The changes to your plan regarding some of those that are gonna be made, possibly gonna be triggering some zoning, um, issues, uh, possible, so, they will. The fact that, to read through our notes here, that you no longer wish to retain the commercial space?
Correct.
That's gonna be, that's going to, the proposed amount become residential now, now that's right? That, have you been in discussion with staff about that, that that is gonna trigger the zoning application?
Yes.
You're, you're ready?
Yes.
You're gonna go through with it?
Yes. We're on the agenda for next one.
Why are you...
Well, that's an issue for the zoning.
I'm asking why are you changing, why are you not doing a commercial or a residential?
Well, that's, that's a, that's a big, big story. Do we wanna explain it here?
Yeah, I think so. I think, um, basically, Jim, when he started this project, he was going to run his business from this particular location, and, um, I think because his, his next, uh, big, large project is, uh, out of stock, and this is not gonna be a convenient location. Also, Jim has a number of contractors, subcontractors, who he works with, who, um, would bring oversized vehicles onto the site, and because of the proximity to this intersection here, and, uh, on a daily routine, bringing this equipment and the children on the site now, it's not a great idea to have that mix. Okay, so, we've felt that, and Jim and I have discussed this in the past, and Mr. Piazza had this property, he tried to develop this commercially also, and he held up this property for about three years, I believe it was three or three years, and was not able to develop this property commercially. So, Jim has also tried to get somebody to rent this space, um, you know, as one of those mentioned in the zoning regs, uh, at Martin Class.
Same with business.
Business, a number of other places, worship, doesn't work for that. And I went through the, the total list of, you know, which end, who would pursue a professional office and so forth, but it's very difficult to get that mixing to this with children on the site, you know?
But that was part of the, the original plan, though.
Yes, it was.
I mean, this is like...
How was this built out? Is it empty inside?
It's empty, yes.
So, the first floor is not, hasn't been built out?
Well, the first floor, the one unit is not built out. It's empty or, it's pending, okay?
Is it, when you say pending, is it, is it, is it built like a commercial space, or is it built like a residential?
Residential.
It's just not in use yet.
Yeah, it can work on use until...
We have to get the zoning, uh, resolved before we can change the usage.
I, I mean, I just think there's some substantial deviation from what we agreed to as a board here. I don't know what the recourse for it is, but...
We, we talk about how we could rectify this, I mean...
Well, maybe we can add a bit of take here about, are there some elements actually okay with, I know the fence is...
Could we eliminate between...
And how it's supposed to work from the street.
I think the street trees are an important element.
Could we eliminate this fence right here, at the center of the site, and that would open up to...
What if it's a commercial? Open eight foot, ten foot of it, put in a tree or...
Well, I, I think that board members want to see, you know, this connected with the, the community and not be so isolated. And I'm thinking that this could be, you know, a large opening, and possibly we could start from there as well as, you know, give and take on this. Is that, make, um...
I think the fence is fantastic, I would think. I don't know, it's so subjective and it's, uh...
And like you said, you know why you're here today.
I know, and I, I did ask the building inspector, was this a, within the regulations to put a fence in? I mean, I guess I didn't relate back to this original plan, it seemed so long ago that it, you know, it seemed distant to me. I certainly wasn't thinking of it, and I was countering anyone, anyone else's decision or being in any way obstructive or, uh, ornery or, I didn't think of it that way. I was just doing as I, as I felt it would be best, and, and I guess I did not think that, of this process.
Well, we, I think we both, this is the first time it's happened.
I know, I know.
And we do recognize that, you know, ideas, concepts, as your project, as a project evolves, not just with this one, things change, right?
In other words, this, I had this fence built and this one built before even thought of building the one in the middle. It's just sort of, it grew along, uh, in, in one from another, and the snow, the issues where the snow developed, and the handicap changed, and we kept this tree, and one this changed, and then the idea of looking over at the Sunoco, we wanted to block that out, so one thing grew into another.
Can we also just talk about the trees along the back of the building? You have, um, like AC units or...
It's all full of equipment back there.
So, there is equipment that's not shown on this?
Yeah, there's AC equipment in storage, and there's no, there's a six, six and a half high foot fence all along the back, and it's only about eleven feet deep, so there's really no, it's not appropriate to have any trees there. I've got stone on the ground, uh...
So, there's, is there loud sound, though, that would, that neighboring residential home would hear?
Oh, no, we're not that loud. There's the, there's the AC units. They're not, they're not a noise issue.
What about the lighting? You said there were changes to the lighting.
Yes, yes. Jim eliminated all the pole mounted lights, and the photographs that were sent around does show the type of light that he did use on the building, um, which is, I felt that it wasn't attractive downlight. These are on sensors, photo sensors, and, um, so, the, they're on at night, they project downward, and they light this light out of the building.
So, the original...
We had pole mounted lights on.
Right.
Yes.
So, they're eliminated?
Eliminated.
They're eliminated and retired?
And they're, they're working great, so these, these look wonderful at night and seems to do the job, and the, in conjunction with the street lighting, we do have two street lights on the front of the, in front of the property that overlight, you know, they do light the street, obviously. They throw off, they light us up quite well.
So, through this process, they have to go to zoning for this?
They have to, they have to go to zoning to convert the commercial unit to the residential unit. And also going to impact the retrofit will be increased, so that will be additional expense.
It's our position, they have to go to zoning first before you agree with it.
Yeah, I, I would say yes.
That's the next step, is they have to go to zoning. They certainly can come to you tonight and tell you what their plans are, but the bottom line is that the configuration they're talking about now is not the configuration you approved, and it's not permitted in that zone. So, they have to go to zoning, they have to ask for a variance so that zoning can address this. Once zoning addresses this, they can come back to you.
Where are we with people living in this property?
What's that?
Where are we with people living in the property? We have COs, temporary COs?
Well, the code is very clear that they're not supposed to grant, you know, the building department or the COs, and, you know, if there is not compliance with the site plan, which there isn't. Now, my understanding is there is a, you know, tenant in the building, and the building department is dealing with that now, um, and I don't believe that there's any effort to put that tenant out, um, but until the rest of this process plays out, they're clearly in violation of the site plan, and they have to go to zoning to get a, to get a variance, and they have a very heavy burden in front of the zoning committee.
So, in the meantime...
Are we looking to table to, to waiting for zoning?
My recommendation would be to table it pending, you know, with determination by the ZVA. And I believe staff is, you know, in confluence of that as well.
So...
Could I ask a few questions before we leave, senior?
Okay.
Okay, um, as, as, I'm trying to work a solution.
And that's what I was trying to get to also, that, you know, the issues that are, that are, um...
Paul, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm trying to work a solution.
I know.
Okay, if we eliminate the fence on the front, if we plant some trees, if the client is, is willing to do that, and we leave this as commercial...
Can you use the microphone?
If we are going to remove the fence on the front, plant some trees on the street, okay, would that satisfy this portion of the project?
I still think that as, um, Dan has expressed, um, as assistant corporate counsel to the board, he believes, and I believe, you should go to the ZVA first.
Well, if, Paul, if what you're saying is a commercial, um, portion of the building would remain, then I believe that takes the zoning issue off the table.
No, that's not what he's...
No, what he's basically saying is, can we give them some input on the front of this, so when they go to ZVA and they come back to us, we're not revisiting the landscaping and delaying another month, another month, another month? So, what he'd like us to do is iron out the landscaping, and then they can go to zoning and figure out the commercial or the residential section. My opinion as a board member, in order for me to improve on this, the streetscape and the fence across the front's gotta go, or I'm gonna know. I don't have the other board members get...
I agree with that, and I think, I think all of the lands, the original landscaping that we spent weeks talking about needs to be adhered to, front and back.
I understand the back, I understand the mechanicals, and I understand the distance.
I get that, something to be done back there.
And I get the side with the snow plowing, because, again, he's now in the property, we've had a winter storm, he's had the opportunity. I, I will, I, I'm okay with that, with respect to the application.
I'm okay with that, that part doesn't matter.
My biggest issue is when I drive down Fox River Avenue, I see a beautiful building, and I can't see anything in between because there's no landscaping, people out front because the fence blocks it all the way down. The fence is a very nice fence along the side, it's a very nice fence in the back. I don't care that it's wooden gray versus, uh, the original white vinyl. Personally, it's a heavier duty fence, kids can jump it, they're not gonna break it on them. I get why he did it, but the landscaping across the front, there is none.
All right, so, if we were to take the fence down on the front of the property, and it's an arbitrary number, six trees of...
I would say, I would defer to staff, you can work with staff on that, what you can fit. I mean, I, I appreciate the fact that the avenue didn't cut down the other two large trees, they're mature trees, they should stay, in my opinion, looking at it again tonight. I didn't realize they were there probably the last time. So, I think if the avenue worked with staff and they clean up the streetscape and add some trees across the front, I would be much happier when it came back.
Can I ask one other question?
Sure.
The client, Jim here, um, decided to fit up another unit as a residential, but myself as an architect, as a professional person, works out of the house, and, and no one, no one else is in the house, and I find it very convenient, in fact, it's professional, to have a kitchen and a bathroom, okay? So, I'm saying that that space, for a professional, could be used, okay? And it could remain intact as is, and still be used as a professional office, a doctor's office, a psychiatrist, or something like that. Do we have to remove the elements in order to make this...
Well, then, is, is this professional going to stay there? Well, then, is, is this professional going to stay there overnight?
Is it, is it going to be a residence?
This is...
That's, that's, I think, that's where, that's the threshold right there.
I understand. So we worked a voting plan without a fence, with some additional trees along Foxwell. And then we'll, I, we're on the agenda for December with the ZBA, okay? And we'll finish our application and get in front of them and plead our case.
Do they meet before, ZBA meet before our board?
Uh, I think they do.
Maybe they do.
Do you know when the December zoning board of appeal meeting is?
December meeting is the second Thursday, which would be the 13th meeting.
They will meet before...
So if the ZBA couldn't make a determination December, they could come back to our December board?
Correct.
And we can vote on this so he could get tenants in, in the first of the year. So we should put them on the agenda, but if they have to do something else, the ZBA will just table it.
Do we have any, do we have any?
Hopefully we had this construction, you know, as I said, this is the first time this happened, connected with the application. And I look forward to resolving this issue and, and events except for the board family. And so having said that, I'll make a motion that we table item number 10, item 22. Senator Robert Jacobson, vote in favor. Aye, opposed?
Thank you. I know you've been in favor of this property from all of these proposals, I don't think yourself, you're very interesting.
Are you keeping it? Do we need it? Uh, we have one, it wasn't color, but, well, is it the same?
It's the same.
We don't need the color, no, it's fine. I mean, if you want it, it's fine. As long as it's the same plan.
Yes, it's the same.
Okay.
Propose board policy number 26. And this will recognize making one happens away all the time, it could likely cause a city zone.
The reason that, I mean, it's, it's in the zoning law, the reason that we're looking at it as board policies and it's right there in front of their face when we get the application. So we...
Why don't we just put it in the application? I mean, I'm just saying, we're getting a lot of policies.
It is, it becomes hard.
So if it's, if it's along the books, like we know we have to stop for stop signs, and if it's in the application, why do we now have to worry about a number, I mean, this is, these policies are declining. I mean, I, I just think it's, I think the policy should be reserved for, I don't want to say more important things, but, I mean, more important, my own, my own opinion. We're, we're getting, we're getting too many policies.
Where it, it becomes part of the application.
Well, where it could be, I'm just thinking about this now, is that we could put it in the decision letter.
Put a decision letter, you could put it on the application itself, you could make a no, I mean, it's in the law. It just, I mean, if we keep doing policies to tell people where to go look at the law, we're going to have as many policies as the laws. I'm not, I'm not faulting you off because I get what you're saying, but to a certain extent, people have to, I mean, they have to take responsibility and they got to figure some of this stuff out.
It's an awareness issue.
But now we're up to 26 awarenesses.
Some of them have...
I mean, no offense, no offense, but, and I'm going to be honest with you, no offense, but you know these policies, you're sitting here rattling them all. And, I mean, we're getting so many policies now that honestly, we need a flow chart to figure out what policies we're talking about, because there's so many now. It just...
So is there a way to put it on the application without having to make a particular statement?
We could put it on the...
I mean, if they sign an application after...
Because this is, the difference is, this is a law, not just what kind of lighting may need. You know what I'm saying?
But we have, we have other policies that deal with law, that are not going to be in the social, the common sense, that there's policy, you know, that, that happens. And so, I mean, I'm going to do the same.
But that, well, we had some of those when we had four or five policies. Now we're getting like more and more and more. I don't know, that's, that's my own thing, for what it's, I, I get what staff's saying.
We could...
I get that you don't want people, you know, coming back because they didn't tell me and we have to flag it, but it's just we're, they're getting...
Another place we could possibly put it would be on the checklist. Well, why don't we think about it and let them have that consider, maybe?
If, if you feel that it's a big problem, you want it, I'll support board, but I made this argument before with policies, you know, it's easy, I don't throw it, but, you know, it's getting to be a law.
Okay.
I want the board members to.
I kind of feel the same way.
I mean, no offense, I don't put any board members, but if I ask somebody here, what's board policy 17, what's board policy 12, they're going to look at, oh, I mean, just we have a lot of them.
I mean, I support Sue and Kylie, whatever makes their job easy.
I agree.
So I'm, that, that's my first statement, but it did seem to me like it didn't really need to be a policy. But if it's, makes your life easier, you know, and, I mean, because you guys have so much to do and so much to keep track of, you know, so what's making your life easy, I'll support.
And that's a good way to put it, I agree.
I agree, wholeheartedly, but I mean, it just, you know. We had four, four policies a year, I mean...
Well, this, this will make your, your job easier. This, this, will this do that?
Think about it.
Well, it, well, I, I mean, I think it would because it would just effectively, you know, you would be able to...
You know, you probably could have snuck it in when not even us knowing what board policy was, you know?
Exactly.
You could have just...
She said, oh yeah, don't you remember, 426, 426, I was there. Yeah, why don't we look at...
But if that's part of the decision, then it's, it's, I think it's, has more standing, you know, otherwise it has to be...
No, but out of all the years, we only had one person who applied.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, yeah, it happened to be a controversial topic, but it was only one person of all these years. Oh, well.
We've never had the excavation issue before that I remember in my time on the board. So it's not like it's going to come up a lot, you know?
It's come up before, but people have renewed because of 120 days expired.
Right.
Because they read the code and they read the resolution, then read the...
The other thing is that every application, every approval...
I mean, most people know if you got a bill, you need a bill. They may not know what they need it for, but they at least go and ask the question.
And they know what the deadline is in the circuit of account.
Do you want to think about it for a moment?
Yeah, let's look at it.
Whatever, if, if, if the office is pushing for it, I would support it, but I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
Do you need it? You can say yes or no.
Let's look at the application and the letter and maybe there's a, maybe there's a way to drive the point.
Sleep on it.
It's going to have to be, it's going to have to be part of every decision in order for us. I'm just saying. Why?
I mean, does every decision have to tell them that they have to take out insurance and they have to comply with New York State Building Code when they get a building permit? I mean, does, does building...
No, that's not part of our job.
That's what I'm just saying, I mean, it's like, people have to realize that there's certain things that they have to do to comply with the law. I don't know. Do you want it? I'm not, I'm not fighting, yeah.
I'll make the motion we adopt board policy 26. You can vote it down now. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mary Jo. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
Pursue.
Are you opposed?
Yeah, I agree with, with, I mean, I support it, okay.
Are you, are you, yes?
I would say yes.
The doctor? Cancer.org, okay?
I mean, we're going to have to get a lower, like, board's...
I keep telling Kylie, I want like the board policy blanked out, the board will just flip it.
Well, the joke here also is, tell them, tell the applicant, it's easier to tell them which, which policies they don't need and what policies they need. Seriously, go to cancer.org, read up on...
Yeah, I was reading, I started to read that.
This is right. It's a couple pages.
But are we not supposed to consider?
Who's your side?
Sorry, what is it? Side with one like a dog. Horizons attorneys are going to say you can't do that.
So, are you still discussing?
No.
Well, I would just like to ask, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time to talk about it, but like, to the, when we started the meeting today, I think it's not really clear. I think we have to make clear to the audience what the policy of unspeaking, the public hearings are. Because they get confused, they want to speak, they're allowed to speak, we want to hear from them, everybody that wants to speak, we want to give them an opportunity. But I think people were confused about when they could come to the mic, how long they gave speech, they get confused.
Again, this is people come to the meeting, they're talking to the audience, they're not paying attention.
I know.
And then they come up. And very clearly, this is open public speaking, you can talk about anything you want, but if you have a specific item that you would like to talk about on the agenda, which agendas have provided on a specific topic, we ask you, please wait until that time. How much clearer can you be in English grammar to explain that?
But I, and, but that's not always clear.
Well, and we try to keep people on point, and sometimes people, but we have to let them know.
No, no, I'm not trying, I'm not, I'm not trying to stop them from saying, I don't want to stop anybody from coming to the mic. And I'm not asking them to stop saying anything they want.
And we ask them to respect the speakers.
I just want them to know when they can speak, so they're not confused about when they can, so they don't miss the opportunity to speak.
Like when we identify, when we get the public, open public speaking in the beginning, and then we go to public hearing, right?
Right.
So that's where there may be...
I think people get a little bit confused there, like the difference between the open public speaking and then the public hearing portion. I just see confusion and I see people not sure when they can come up. I want everybody, I'm not trying to stop anybody from coming to the mic, that's not my purpose of saying this.
No, and, and I know that, I know that.
I just want to make that clear. I want anybody who wants to speak to get an opportunity to speak on what they want to speak on.
Well, like, for, for example, Alder and Coop wanted to speak on something and we were already at a public speak, public hearings.
That's what I'm saying.
And, you know, we had to say, you know...
But we want to hear from him.
Did he come in late then, right?
He did, yeah, he did.
So, I mean, you know, we specifically in the beginning, you say in a very easy, calm voice, you can talk about anything you want in public speaking and we allow 15 minutes for it. If you have a specific agenda item that you would like to talk about, such as, and usually you cite the most controversial issue of the night, we ask that you wait. I don't know how else to explain it.
Yeah.
But people want to come back and they want to come back and they want to come back. And then somebody says something and then they want to come back and comment on that. And this isn't, it's not a dialogue back where it's, you give your comments, your comments are what they are, and then we allow the next person to talk.
Yeah, as long as they get to say what they want to say, I don't, it shouldn't be a back, it's not meant to be a back and forth.
Well, let's also clarify, the comments that are made during the public comment section of the meeting are not part of the record with regard to a review for a particular application, okay? The public hearing portion of the meeting for that particular application, that's the record.
Right.
Okay? So if someone gets up during public comment and speaks about an agenda item, okay, that's not included in the record if that record is repeated.
That's why we try and push it to that specific item.
Right. And that's what, I'm not sure, some of these, some people I don't think are clear on that. So I want them to be able to say what they want to say, when they, when it's, that's all I'm saying.
And we have said that on the record repeatedly, John, we have repeated it.
Every month.
That if there is a specific issue on the, on the agenda that they wish to speak about and they want to be made part of the record with regard to that item, they have to speak that.
I'm, I'm good, I'm just, I just want to say, that's all.
And I have to, but in fairness to Wayne, Wayne has specifically stopped people and said, look, if you want to talk, we're going to talk about it later, can you please wait until later because we want it part of that.
Right, and I'm not criticizing Wayne whatsoever, I just, I didn't always say that. If you do, we're also done. I'm on the record saying that.
Well, like, we're, because we haven't, you know, we haven't adjourned yet, so yeah, you are.
Just being efficient.